Starting the webinar.
Good morning, and welcome to today's hybrid New York City Council hearing for the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. To minimize disruptions, please place all electronic devices to vibrate or silent mode. If you'd like to submit testimony, please send via email to landusetestimony@council.myc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair Riley, we are ready to begin.
Good morning, good morning, everyone, and welcome to a meeting of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. I am Councilmember Riley, Chair of the Subcommittee. This morning, I am joined by Councilmember Lewis, Botcher, Shulman, Carr, and remotely by Councilmember Moya. Today, we will vote on a rezoning proposal in Brooklyn for the Ninth Street that was heard by the Subcommittee on September 22nd, and hold public hearings for three rezoning proposals, also in Brooklyn, for 1571 McDonald Avenue, 280 Bergen Street, and Innovative Urban Village. Before we begin, I recognize the Subcommittee Council to review the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chair Riley. I am Angelina Martinez Rubio, counsel to the Subcommittee. This meeting is being held in hybrid format, so members of the Subcommittee are required to meet in person. Members of the public who wish to testify may testify in person or via Zoom. Members of the public wishing to testify remotely were asked to register for today's hearings. If you wish to testify and you have not registered already, you can do so now by visiting the New York City Council website at www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. Or for those of you here in the room, the hearing room, please see one of the sergeants at arms to prepare and submit a speaker card. Members of the public may also view a live stream broadcast of this meeting at the council's website, and if you need an accessible version of any of the presentations shown today, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. When called to testify, individuals appearing before the Subcommittee will remain muted until recognized by the chair to speak. Applicant teams will be recognized as a group and called first, followed by members of the public. When the chair or I recognize you, you are joining us remotely, your microphone will be unmuted. Please take a moment to check your device and confirm that your mic is on before you begin speaking. Public testimony will be limited to two minutes per witness. If you have additional testimony you would like the Subcommittee to consider, if you have written testimony you would like to submit, instead of appearing here before the Subcommittee, you may also submit that to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Please indicate the LU number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. Witnesses joining us remotely are requested to remain in the meeting until excused by the chair, as councilmembers may have questions. Finally, there will be pauses over the course of this hybrid meeting for various technical reasons, and we ask that you please be patient as we work through any of these issues. Chair Riley will now continue with today's agenda items.
Thank you, council. Today, we will vote to approve with modifications LU's 110, 111, and 112 relating to the Ninth Street rezoning proposal in Councilmember Hanif's district in Brooklyn. The proposal would rezone the existing M2-1 to an M1-4/R7A zoning district, establish a new special use district, and an MIH program area utilizing MIH Option 1, as well as grant a special permit to waive accessory residential parking requirements. These approvals will facilitate the development of a new mixed-use building. Our modification will be to rezone to an M1-4/R6B zoning district instead of the proposed M1-4/R7A to better reflect the character of this block and the nearby build context, which was similarly rezoned as part of the recent Gowanus Neighborhood rezoning, while also maintaining the MIH requirement for the development site. We will also modify the text amendment to reflect the zoning district change and to add deep affordability option. Finally, we will also modify the zoning special permit to reflect the zoning district change. Councilmember Hanif is in support of this proposal as modified. Are there any councilmembers with questions or remarks at this time? I will now call for a vote to approve with modifications LU's 110, 111, and 112 for the Ninth Street rezoning proposal, and council, can you please call the roll?
Chair Riley.
I don't know.
Chair, um, former Chair Moya, online.
Thank you. I, uh, I vote aye and all.
Chair Lewis.
I vote aye.
Councilmember Botcher.
Aye and all.
Councilmember Shulman.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye and all.
The vote currently stands at six in the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions, and we will leave the vote open.
Thank you, council. To begin today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on the preconsiders LU's relating to U-LUP numbers C210, 230, ZMK, and N210, 232, ZRK relating to the 1571 McDonald Avenue rezoning proposal in Councilmember Jaeger's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R5/C2-3 zoning district within the Special Ocean Parkway district to a C4-4L district and a relating zoning text amendment to mapping MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Council, can you please call the first panel for this item?
Yes, if we could have, sorry, if we could have the panelists join us up here, and while you set up, I'll say your names. Oh, okay. While we're having you guys set up, I'm going to take the vote for Councilmember Abreu. So continuing the vote for land use items 110, 111, 112, Councilmember Abreu.
Aye.
So the vote currently stands at seven in the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions, and we will leave the vote open.
Thank you.
Give me just one second, Chair, while I get the names of the panelists. So, so I thought there were only two of you. So Rachel, if you could, um, so I have Sergey Reibach and Ken Fisher, and we have a third. All right, thanks. You did submit a card, so thanks, Rachel. Um, so, go ahead, Chair.
Council, can you please administer the affirmation?
So panelists, can you please raise your right hands and answer to the, into the mic the following questions. Do you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and in your answers to all councilmember questions?
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of the presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask you, please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Dear Committee, good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to, to present. My name is Sergey Reibach. I'm one of the principals of the development entity, 1571 Development LLC. Uh, we are a real estate company in Brooklyn. We operate by owning buildings, developing buildings, and, uh, this is an opportunity that we seek to embark on approximately two and a half years ago to start this rezoning process. Uh, currently, the lot we acquired in 2017, and it is a spa. We came before you a few years ago to seek a cultural establishment permit, which was granted. Uh, last week, I believe, we received our TCO for a large facility. It's a 50,000 square foot spa. Uh, and we're waiting now for DOH approval, which should happen probably this week. Um, approximately two and a half years ago, a furniture store that occupied 33, 30% of the lot went out of business. Um, it created a large vacancy within this assemblage, and this is what started this application and this idea to add more residential housing, uh, as on, as part of this new development. I would like to introduce my team, Rachel and Ken, who are our council, and thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Ken Fisher. I'm a member of the law firm of Cozen O'Connor. We're land use counsel for the applicant, and Rachel Skoll is my associate. I'm going to do the principal presentation. She's available in case I get something wrong, as I often do. Um, we also have the project architect available if, if, if that's necessary. If we can get the presentation up, please, and we'll go to the next slide. So the, the site is on McDonald Avenue, um, between Avenue M and Avenue N. Um, and the notable feature about this is, is, as you can see, we're basically right where there's an elevated train line, and in fact, there's a, a station for the, um, for the N on the block. Um, and just want to mention that we, we did confirm with the MTA actually even before zoning for accessibility went into effect, um, and then afterwards that, that there was not a suitable opportunity for them to take advantage of our development to make the station more, more accessible. Next, please. We're in the Special Ocean Parkway, uh, district. This, it is not otherwise affected, and the basic functions of the, of the special district are not affected. What we're proposing to do is to rezone from what is currently a R5/C2-3 with a 1.65 FAR to a C4-4L, which is an R7A equivalent with a 4.6 FAR with MIH. This zoning designation was actually suggested to us by the Department of City Planning. They developed it specifically for corridors like this, where you have an elevated train, areas well-served by mass transit. Um, the commercial, as you can imagine, underneath the, uh, the, the L is not particularly active, um, and it's an opportunity to take advantage of the transit, uh, for, for additional development. We're also proposing, there's a small piece, you can see on the, on the map on the left, there's a, there's a, on the right, rather, there's a, there's a small piece where the commercial wraps around. Um, City Planning felt that wasn't appropriate. The current use is residential, so that's being eliminated. It otherwise doesn't really affect, um, what our proposal is. Next, please. So we are a mid-block site. Um, as, uh, as Sergey mentioned, currently, under development is a, is a pretty substantial spa. It'll have wonderful facilities, multicultural. We, we think it's going to really help with the revitalization of the, of the area. Um, the ends of the block are part of the rezoning application, but they're not considered soft sites at this point. Most of the lots are individually owned. Um, they, and, uh, at the end of the block, there's a new community facility, four-story community facility that's being built pursuant to a, pursuant to a variance. Next, please. Just a quick picture of the spa, and we'll go to the next slide, please. So what we're proposing to do is basically add 116,000 square feet of residential space on top of the spa. Uh, we're also going to be adding about 5,000, 500 square feet of commercial space, bringing it to a total of 27,700 square feet of commercial space, and the permitted size of the building would be 108 feet. Um, we're accommodating 72 required parking spaces, 37 for the commercial, and 35 for the residential. Um, but, you know, sometimes things work out in ways that you didn't necessarily anticipate. One of the benefits of doing the building in these two phases is that we're going to be able to use the roof of the spa primarily for parking, which allows us the ability to lift the residential portion up even further than it would have been, and given the proximity, proximity to the subway, we consider that a benefit. The zoning also, if we go to the next slide, please, the zoning also, uh, provides for us to set back 40 feet for the residential. So the commercial is set back 20 feet. Uh, there's actually a small part with an additional five-foot setback, but the residential will be 40 feet back from, uh, the, the trains. And yes, there is, um, provision for a little bit of green space and a, and a green roof. I think we'll see that in one of the renderings in a few minutes. Next. So we're proceeding under an environmental assessment. Our analysis showed no significant impacts in any of the, in any of the categories. I just want to mention that for those of you who know McDonald Avenue, it's, it can be a little bit congested. Most elevated, streets with elevated, uh, train lines are. We had our consultant look particularly close at impacts on traffic as cars came in and out of the, of the parking, and none were identified. One of the benefits of, of the design is that it has an ample queuing area, so we're not expecting, uh, to create any congestion on the sidewalk. We will get an E designation because of the proximity to the subway, and what that basically means is that we'll have to put in, um, soundproof windows, uh, in the building, but nothing out of the ordinary and something that's become increasingly common as we run out of development sites in the city. Next, please. So this is an illustrative rendering. Um, you can see that the area behind us is a mix of, you know, slightly smaller apartment buildings as well as lower-rise buildings, but there's a fair number of, of apartment buildings, sort of standard building form for that area nearby. So we're, we, we have a, you know, an ambitious project. It's not easy to build on top of an existing building, and that has some additional costs associated with it. Um, but the building was designed to meet community needs, which are quite well documented and quite extensive. We go to the next slide. In, in 2017, the Furman Center identified this community board as having the third highest severe crowding rate in New York City. Um, and the community board's own statement of needs, um, notes that families in the district have many children. They need housing to accommodate their large families, um, and at an affordable rate. So our building has been designed with only two and three-bedroom apartments, and the apartments are designed to be larger, 25 to 30% larger than the minimum standards that HBD requires for inclusionary housing. So let me just repeat that. Two and three-bedroom apartments that are 25 to 30% larger than the HBD minimum requirements, and the units distributed throughout, the finishes will all be identical. Um, this is genuinely intended to meet a, a bona fide and unique need in the community, um, and, and where we, we think that we can make a contribution. As you mentioned, we're, we're having this mapped as MIH Option 2. That's a, as you know, an average of 80%. We have not sat down, um, with the councilmember or HBD to kind of finalize what the spread would be in terms of those units, uh, but we can say that, uh, as best as we can tell from the Equitable Development Data Explorer, there have been no, uh, buildings constructed at this AMI since they began tracking this data in 2014. In fact, over the past 10 years, this community board has added 13,000 residents, um, but they've only added 1,150 new housing units. There's not a lot of, of places for development, which is why City Planning and the Borough President both felt that this was an appropriate location, particularly given its proximity to, to, to transit. Um, last point I want to make on this before I move on, um, you know, I don't have to tell anybody on this committee that as soon as you announce you're putting a new apartment building someplace, everybody is concerned that it's going to be the next Williamsburg or the next downtown Brooklyn, right? That it's going to set off a, a stampede. Uh, some of you know, I had the good fortune to represent Councilmember Russell's district as we were going through that period of dynamic change, and since going back to the full-time practice of law, I've been involved with a lot of development projects around the city. And in my opinion, this is not that neighborhood. This is, this is a single apartment building, um, and it's, it's going to attract primarily people from the neighborhood based on the conversations that I've had with any number of, of residents who feel that they would like to stay in the neighborhood, their kids can't stay in the neighborhood, they got priced out of the neighborhood, but there's no reason to think that this is going to set off, um, the kind of development rush that we've seen in other parts of the city when there are rezonings. Next, please. We're, we're, we're not alone in terms of size. There are a few, uh, buildings that are seven stories or above nearby. Um, but I also want to call out the next slide, please. This illustrates that there have been several rezonings in proximity to our site that were approved in the past four years, including one at 1881 McDonald Avenue, which is permitted to be nine stories. Uh, there's another at nine stories, one at, um, 11 stories, um, and just, uh, just two weeks ago, um, the council approved an application for 2080 McDonald Avenue, um, which has the same C44L zoning designation and the same condition that it's alongside of the elevated, uh, track. So that's the one at the bottom of the map that we're showing you two weeks ago. Um, next, please. Now, I have to say that our, the reaction we got at the community board was mixed. Um, as one would expect, some of the neighbors who felt that their, um, community was being disrupted, uh, came out in opposition, um, and the, the land use committee of the community board voted to disapprove the application. When it came before the full board, um, we had developed an alternative proposal that we thought was responsive to the comments that we, we heard. We had reduced the height of the building, we were prepared to reduce the height of the building to 84, uh, I'm sorry, 88 feet, uh, reduced the number of dwelling units from 104 to 84. Um, of course, the affordable would have gone down from 37 to 25. Um, we were willing to add some four-bedroom apartments, which was something that we heard, and, uh, a unique, uh, request, we, we were able to accommodate additional parking in response to what we heard from the community. Unfortunately, we were not given the opportunity to present that at the full Land Use Committee meeting, um, but there was a robust discussion, and the upshot of that was that there were 17 votes in favor of the recommendation to deny, 17, in effect, no votes on the project, but there were also nine votes against the Land Use Committee recommendation and six abstentions, and as, as all of you know, under the charter, for this purpose, an abstention is counted as a no vote. So effectively, this was a 17 to 15 vote to deny the, the application. The community board quite clearly divided on the appropriateness of what we were, uh, doing, and again, that was without the benefit of our being able to present to them, uh, the alternative. Borough President issued a recommendation with some modifications. Um, I think we're in the process of accommodating all of those, with, with the exception of his recommendation to eliminate half the parking, which we didn't think was in response to, you know, what the community wanted, um, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Uh, the first question I have is, when did you first begin working on a proposal to redevelop this property, and how did you decide on the proposed density, height, and mixture of the uses?
So it's, as, as Sergey mentioned, they acquired the property back in, in 2017 and started planning for the, um, 2017, right?
Yes.
And started planning for the, uh, for the spa, and then after the building was already in construction, uh, the furniture store that occupied the rest of, of the lot went out of business, and they were able to acquire it, and that allowed them to expand the site. Um, and that's when they started to think of, of, of whether or not it was now big enough, uh, because, partly because you had a place where you could have cars enter, to be able to do the, um, to do some residential on top. Uh, we approached City Planning two and a half years ago, roughly. Um, we had them provide the zoning designation that we then pursued. Um, like a lot of other projects, we were put on, uh, the backburner during the COVID crisis. They were playing catch-up with it, um, but we were fortunate enough to get certified into, uh, public review this year, and, and now we're with you. So, so it evolved, um, because the furniture store became available, which was not anticipated when they began the construction.
Thank you. Did you engage with neighbors and those property owners, including, including in the rezoning area before filing this application?
Well, the, the, the ownership team, um, is, is from Brooklyn. They were spending a lot of time on the site. They talked to people, um, as they encountered them. We didn't do any formal outreach to the neighbors, um, but one of the things that's unique about this community board was they sent the mailing out to, um, everyone within a four or 500-foot radius, um, to make sure that they were aware of the public hearing, and there was a good turnout at the, um, at the Land Use Committee. As I say, a number of them were, were critical of us. At the full Land Use Committee meeting, uh, the full land, I'm sorry, at the full community board meeting, there were at least 20 or 30 people who came to speak in favor of the project. Unfortunately, they were not given the opportunity to do that under the format that the community board was using.
That lived in the same radius, correct?
Well, I, some of them lived in the same radius, others lived, uh, lived nearby, but all of them were from that community board, and most of them were within walking distance.
Okay. Would the proposed new design at nine stories require the same C4-4L zoning district, and have you looked at any lower-density districts in response to feedback during the public review process?
Yeah, we would still, assuming that that was an acceptable solution, we would still pursue the same zoning designation because it has some other, um, qualities to it that would facilitate the, the design and the development. Um, we would expect that the height limit could be imposed by modification of the council. Uh, there are some other methodologies for doing that, but we certainly wouldn't object to a modification that limited the, the height of the, of the building. Um, but again, the envelopes and other factors, parking setbacks, um, all work well with the zoning designation.
Just to add to that, oh, sorry, Rachel Skoll, Cozen O'Connor. Um, just to add to that, the C44L district, one of the biggest benefits is the setback. So what you have where you're, where you have the C44L map next to the above-ground train, you get to have basically a, a lower permitted base height so that you can step back sooner, so that you can get your bulk away from the train. So we're setting back 20 feet when we get to the residential portion, 20 feet from the street line. We have a very wide street here, 100 feet wide, very generous sidewalks. It results in 100 feet, or, sorry, it results in 40 feet back from the above-ground train lines. Uh, that's probably the biggest benefit of the C44L and why we would want to seek it, even if we were to cap the height lower. At the ground floor, it also lets you set back the street wall five feet rather than having to have maybe a consistent street wall that's in line with other buildings, so you get a sidewalk widening effect, which gets more light and air down to the ground level. So there's a lot of benefits to the C44L, even if it ends up that we want to cap the height at, at 95 feet. I mean, we personally would love to go to 108 feet as we've planned, but, but we would, no matter what, love to hang on to the C44L for the, the design benefits that comes with it.
Okay, thank you. Uh, does any of the councilmembers have any questions? Uh, Councilmember Lewis?
Thank you, Chair. I noticed in your presentation, four bedrooms, if you would elaborate a little bit more on that. I noticed the two, three bedrooms, but then in your presentation you didn't mention four bedrooms.
It was something we heard at the community board meeting, um, you know, as the, as the, the community board statement of needs notes and, and other, uh, research into this area indicates, there are a lot of large families in, in this neighborhood. Um, and so the request was for some four bedrooms in order to be able to, to accommodate that. Effectively, we can do that by taking two two-bedrooms and combining them. Um, we haven't done the final design yet. In part, that'll depend on, um, what happens with, with a height limit, um, but we, but it was, it was clearly a need that was articulated to us and one that, that we're able to accommodate. Uh, on a per-square-foot basis, it's not as lucrative for the developer. Quite frankly, neither are two bedrooms or three bedrooms. Quite frankly, neither are two bedrooms or three bedrooms, and certainly not apartments that are 25% larger than what HPD would require, right? We're not trying to squeeze the last square foot out of the building. We just think it's better for the community, and it's something that we're fortunately in a position to be able to accommodate.
I think over time, it will be lucrative. So if this is something that the community board is asking for, and you're able to accommodate it, even if it's a couple, it's something that should be considered if you want to be a good partner with the community board.
Councilmember, I couldn't agree more, not only consider, but committed to.
All right. Regarding the traffic management plan, because you mentioned congestion earlier, there's a lot of congestion in this area. So where are you in that process?
Basically, there'll be a curb cut, two curb cuts?
Two.
There'll be two curb cuts. Cars will enter through one, exit through the other. There'll be the automated controls, there'll be warning, you know, things, whatever is required by DOB for that. We don't anticipate that the spa and the apartments will be generating traffic necessarily at the same hours, you know? The spa is not necessarily nine to five, and the residential may not be as much at night or during the day. So our traffic consultants looked at it pretty carefully. They didn't think there would be any significant impact. And in fact, they had been the traffic consultants for one of the other projects that I mentioned in the 1800 block of McDonald Avenue. It's the reason we picked them to do the EAS, they were familiar with the area.
And will that be presented to the community board at some point? I think that's one of the things that was brought up in the Borough President's report.
I don't think the community board expressed any particular concern. We'd be happy to go back to them, you know? Search is in Brooklyn for keeps, and we know there'll be other projects, possibly even in this community board. So if it's something that the board was interested in, of course, we'd be happy to talk with them and make a more detailed presentation. And Councilmember, yeah, as I mentioned, the community board members who expressed themselves and members of the public who expressed themselves overwhelmingly were calling for more parking, which we were able to accommodate by doing valet parking. The Borough President's recommendation was to eliminate the parking for the commercial, basically 35, 37 spots. This is perhaps not a neighborhood, particularly with so many families, that's as accommodating of bicycles as his former district. So it's, we didn't, we have not accepted that recommendation. We went with the community board sentiment to have more parking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Lewis. Councilmember Shulman?
Oh, Councilmember Abra.
Councilmember Abra.
Thank you, Chair. The parkings referenced here, are they underground?
No, no, the parking is actually in the upper story of what's now the spa building, and it'll be on the roof of the spa building. And then the residential will be set back and cantilever up. So there'll be no residential units at the level of the parking, but it's all above-grade.
Got it. Is it fair to say that if the parkings were reduced, there'd be more affordable housing, potentially?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bautcher?
Could you describe what the street frontage would look like? Right now, it's kind of like a long, featureless wall, more or less. What will the proposed street look like?
Well, if we could go back to...
If we could go to Slide 5, that's actually a photo.
We could elaborate on that just a little bit. So the entire length of the site is 280 feet. Approximately 180 feet is taken up by the spa. The spa has, this is just a portion of the spa. There's also a garage entrance on the right side, there are some glass entries on the left side, and then 30% of the site, which was, which is now the vacant furniture store, would be your conventional residential entry, which would be storefront, you know, typical kind of storefront material with a garage next to it as well. So the entire street is actually engaged with different materials. There are nightlights, there are various wood, concrete, and then subsequently to the spa, we're planning for stone and glass material, which would be representative of a typical residential building. So very much engaging the street as opposed to having, you know, more of an industrial use, which is your typical car repair, which is right across the street, or your auto body, or other kind of industrial uses. Thank you.
Councilmember Wrestler?
I just wanted to say that it's always good to see my predecessor and somebody who really did a terrific job representing our community, Ken Fisher. So thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Councilmember. He only says that because I'm still a voter in this district.
It also happens in the future.
There being no other questions for this applicant team, you are now excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on 1571 McDonald Avenue proposal?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair, there are no members of the public signed up to testify online, but I have a couple of speaker cards, who I think they may be the applicant team, but just double-checking. Igor and Mark are part of the applicant team. So there's, if there's anyone here to testify on 1571 McDonald, can you please identify yourself right now? Doesn't look like there's anyone, Chair, so we can go ahead and close the hearing.
Thank you. There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LUs relating to ULP numbers C-210230, ZMK, and N-210231, ZRK, relating to the 1571 McDonald Avenue rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed and the item is laid over. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on the pre-considered LUs relating to the ULP numbers C-220188, ZMK, and N-220189, ZRK, relating to the 280 Bergen Street rezoning proposal, and Councilmember Wrestler's district in Brooklyn. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing M1-2 zoning district to an R7D/C2-4 and an R7A zoning district, and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. For anyone here in person wishing to testify, please see one of the sergeant-at-arms to prepare and submit a speaker's card. Now, I would like to yield my time to Councilmember Wrestler to give any remarks regarding this project. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you so much, Chair Riley. I also, I'd be remiss not to just recognize Reverend Bernard, who's here with us today. It's one of the most distinguished spiritual leaders in New York City, so it's always good to see you. I want to thank firstly just my staff, who work incredibly hard and do a terrific job, especially Arvind, who's here with us today. He's our land use director, Arvind Sawani. He guides us through every land use application, and our chief of staff, Mariana, thank you for working so hard and so smart on behalf of District 33. You know, when, as a candidate for office, I would talk with neighbors often about how frustrated I am with the ULP process, and how broken it is, and how it often feels like the council member and the developer are negotiating in a back room somewhere and let the community know how this whole thing played out, plays out. And we want to do something different in District 33. And I think we are in the process of achieving that with this project. Last fall, the development team reached out to me before I'd even taken office, and we sat down for coffee. And what we laid out together was a community engagement process that after going through the community board, they would meet on a number of occasions with a handful of key community leaders, NYCHA Tenant Association presidents, Civic Association leaders, community board representatives, community-based organization representatives, and that we, as a cohort, would work together to give feedback to the development team to try to make this a better project. I really want to thank the community leaders who have taken the time to meet with the development team and offer their insight and expertise to try to make this a better project. Daughtry from Community Board 2, Howard from the Borum Hill Association, Ms. Bell from the Wykoff Gardens TA, Ms. Brown from the Warren Street TA, Sabine and Jay, and the whole team at the Fifth Avenue Committee. Your expertise and your time have made, have really improved this along the way, and I really deeply want to thank you. I also want to recognize the developers for something else they've done here. When they approached me last fall about this project, I said plainly, you know, sine qua non, my sine qua non, like, was there are two city-owned lots on this block that they had site control of for the next 50 years? You have to give them up and see that they are, and we, so that we can develop them as truly affordable housing. Get the 100% affordable housing we need on these two city-owned lots that have been used as parking since before I was born. And I can't frankly think of a better thing to do as a council member than turn parking lots into 100% affordable housing. And for us to do it in one of the wealthiest neighborhoods in Brooklyn is especially important. So there are still many things for us to work through on this project. I have some ongoing concerns and issues that I hope that we will work through some of today, and I know we'll work through in the weeks ahead. But I think there's a lot here that's been going right, and so I just want to say that in the opening remarks, give these folks a chance to, you know, share their shtick and ask some questions, and really just, again, want to thank the community members who've been working with us so closely to try to get this to a better place.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
So the panelists can just approach the podium as I call your names, Dan Eggers, Jay Siegel, and Rich Dillon.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Analyst, can you please raise your right hand and answer your, give me your answer into the mic to the following question. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answers to all council member questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For the view in public, if you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyuestestimony@council.gov, excuse me, landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please reinstate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Good morning. Dan Eggers, land use attorney at Greenberg Targ. Good to see you again, Chair Riley, and of course, Councilmember Wrestler and committee members on this foggy morning. And Councilmember, thank you for your gracious remarks before, it's appreciated. Can we get the presentation up, please? There we go. Next, please. And before I begin, I'm joined here by my colleague Jay Siegel, in case I say something I shouldn't, and Rich Dillon, representing ownership. This is an application by an affiliate of the Ulano Corporation to rezone the western portion of the block bounded by Nevin Street, Third Avenue, Bergen Street, and Wykoff Street in Borum Hill, so it is all in a residential zoning district, and to map MIH options 1 and 2 over the rezoned area. Next, please. As you see, this is the only manufacturing zone block in this area. The M1-2 district was put in place in the early 1970s in connection with the Bergen Street urban renewal plan to allow the expansion of Ulano. Ulano manufactures screen printing materials. This block's Third Avenue frontage was recently rezoned from an M1-2 district to an R7D/C24 district, with one mid-block lot in an R6B district for a project at 98 Third Avenue. Next, please. This shows our development site and the site of the Third Avenue rezoning. Next, please. The lots in yellow are owned by Ulano, which total 50,000 square feet, and are improved with the one- and two-story buildings you just saw in the photo. Ulano and its predecessors have been on this block since the 1920s. Ulano has been there since the early 1970s. It requested the rezoning to the M1-2 district in the 70s then, so it could expand. Ulano is now shifting its operations to facilities in Texas and Germany. Ulano also leases, as the council member mentioned, parcels from the city totaling about 20,000 square feet, which are controlled by HPD pursuant to a 1973 lease, which are shown there in pink. These parcels are used for accessory parking. Ulano's lease runs through 2063. The two HPD parcels are not part of our client's proposed development. One was rezoned as part of the Third Avenue rezoning, and the other is part of our proposed rezoned area. Next, please. Once again, here we see the site and the Third Avenue rezoning. Next, please. This is along Bergen. Next, please. Shows the Wykoff frontage of the site. Next, please. It's from Nevin's, thank you. Next, please. And here, once again, is the tax map with the existing zoning to orient us. Next, please. So we're proposing to eliminate the remainder of the M1-2 district and map an R7A district in its place. Note that one parcel of ours in the mid-block, that's Lot 42, would be rezoned to an R7A from an R6B district that was mapped as part of the Third Avenue rezoning. This change would result in about six additional dwelling units. The full rezoning area would be mapped for MIH. A portion of the project, as you see there, would be in the R7D/C24 district that was mapped under the Third Avenue rezoning. The R7D with MIH allows for development of up to 5.6 FAR, and the R7A with MIH allows for up to 4.6 FAR. We believe the proposed R7A district creates a transition to the lower-density areas of Borum Hill. Specifically, the rezoning is designed such that the development site would create a transition between the 180-foot-tall Wykoff Gardens buildings to the south, Third Avenue the east, and the lower-density residential neighborhoods that are to the west and north. Next, please. Here are illustrative renderings that show the preliminary design of the project. Next, please. It's Bergen Street looking west. Next, please. This is Wykoff Street. Next, please. All right. These are our illustrative massings that show the maximum-sized buildings that could be constructed in the mid-block. The R7A district with MIH sets a maximum base height of 75 feet, at which height a 15-foot setback is required from narrow streets, and a maximum height of 95 feet or nine stories. The rezoning could allow the development site to be redeveloped with four new buildings. A nine-story building on Bergen Street could contain approximately 250 units, as well as ground-floor retail and community facility uses. A smaller nine-story building fronting on Wykoff could contain about 46 units. Two three-to-five-story townhouse buildings, one on each side of the block's R6B district, could contain about three to five units each. Next, please. Altogether, the contemplated development would contain about 238,000 square feet of floor area, including about 500,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 square feet of commercial floor space and 5,000 square feet of community facility floor space, and about 228,000 square feet of residential floor area. The development would contain about 300 dwelling units. Our application includes MIH options 1 and 2. As you know, option 1 would require 25% or 75 units be affordable, an average of 60% AMI, of which 10% must be affordable and 40% AMI. Option 2 would require 30% or 90 units here be affordable, an average of 80% AMI. We are three concerns expressed by the community board. First, the community board expressed concern that, given the site's proximity to mass transit, the development should not have, should not need required parking, and we originally proposed 125 parking spaces. So in response to this concern, we've begun applying for a special permit to waive the parkings, to waive the development's parking requirement. We have submitted a draft land use application to City Planning, along with a tech memo, and we're hopeful for certification around the end of this year. Second, height. Councilmember Wrestler, as he mentioned, has convened multiple meetings of community stakeholders, including members of the community board, Wykoff Gardens, the president of the Borum Hill Association, and will be speaking with the council member again this Friday. In response to comments from those stakeholders to improve the development's relation to surrounding lower-rise buildings to the west, we are agreeing to increase setbacks for the western edge of the proposed development, which I'll show in the next slide here, please. This shows the development setting back from the development site's western lot line along Bergen Street, above the fourth floor 20 feet, at floors 5 to 7, and floors 8 and 9 setting back an additional 10 feet, so there's a total setback of 30 feet. It was previously 10 feet. In addition, this shows a portion of the development on Wykoff flipping its core to its eastern portion to reduce the height in its western portion. We'd also heard from some in the community that they could actually be comfortable with greater height, if, with the project's height, if there was greater affordability. greater height if, with the project's height, if there was greater affordability. And third, affordability. Councilmember Wrestler has, as he mentioned, asked Ulano to terminate its lease of the HPD parcels, which has over 40 years remaining, in order to facilitate a future HPD proposal on those parcels, and Ulano will agree to do so. We note that the HPD parcels could be redeveloped with 100% affordable housing, having about 100 affordable housing units. We understand the council members having conversations with HPD to seek assurances that HPD will timely undertake the process to redevelop those parcels. And lastly, I want to recognize my colleague Mark Weapon who's here, too. Thank you, and we welcome any questions.
First and foremost, it's really impressive to see the work that you've been doing with the community and the council member. This is how we get projects done, and this is how we make sure and ensure that our community members have a seat at the table, especially when development is coming. So I just want to start that off and commend you for the work that you've been doing, especially with Councilmember Wrestler. It's not easy to please him, so this is a good sign.
No comment, but thank you.
But to continue, the community board and the borough president express concern about lack of environmental or green infrastructure in this plan. Can you please describe the strategies you will employ to meet building energy requirements and maintain a stormwater on-site?
Sure. So the, the chosen contractor will, we're contemplating, use green strategies during construction, ranging from leading energy-efficient construction methodology and equipment usage and process. And under consideration are various measures. That would include the design and building standard of using predominantly electric power, a highly efficient skin and window systems, green roofs, a landscaped rear yard potentially serving as a stormwater infiltration area, as well as extensive new tree planting as permitted along the streetscape, and, and ownership does have every intention of designing as many LED-level specifications as, as possible.
Thank you. Does your plan include any green infrastructure investments such as rain gardens in the public, in the public right-of-way?
We're, we're open to consulting and coordinating with DEP and DOT on, on rain gardens.
Okay. In addition to the new affordable housing that will be provided on this site, this development will be adjacent to three different nitro developments. How will you ensure that the commercial space in your building serves lower-income residents and neighbors?
So we're, as part of the conversations we're having with the community, where we've discussed potential uses that, that could be in that space, that would be desired by the community, and also potentially allowing for rents at below-market for such uses, and that's part of the ongoing discussion, and we, we do want to see something in that space that would, would serve the community.
Thank you. And my last question, if the rezoning is approved, will you guarantee that the existing commercial lease on the HPD properties included in the rezoning area will be relinquished to the city?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Wrestler?
Thank you, Chair Riley, and, and just because he's not up here, thank Mark for his, his real help and partnership on this one. So just a bunch of questions. I'll try to go quickly and ask for kind of quick answers, because I know we got other folks waiting. Firstly, do you all commit to signing or at the very least making best-faith efforts to sign a community benefits agreement with the Fifth Avenue Committee and the Borum Hill Association that memorializes the, you know, various community benefits that we aim to achieve together in this project?
Yes.
Great. We've gone through the status of the relinquished city properties, or actually, just where are we in the process, just for the record, on the relinquishing of the city properties?
Sure. So we received recently a draft lease termination agreement from DCAST. The team is reviewing that, and we expect to provide comments to that agreement very shortly, in the next few days.
Okay. Do you expect for that agreement to be completed or executed by the time of the city council vote on this project?
Yes.
Great. The parking waiver, I think we've covered. The, one of the issues that many community members have raised concerns about are the serious chemicals that the Ulano Corporation has used at this site over the years. Could you share insight into how you'll be approaching the remediation of this, of this location?
Rich, please.
Yes. Yes, thank you. There are no evidence, there is no evidence that there is a chemical problem from the site. Most people would describe the operation as having produced a dye that is used in a screen printing operation, not necessarily a chemical solvent that is dangerous. Nonetheless, our Phase 1 evaluation of the site has indicated that in the, in the, up until about 1950, that site had been used as a Borden Milk Company distribution site. So route trucks would, would stay there overnight, be fueled up, loaded with milk to be delivered to people's homes. There were some diesel tanks for that operation. Our Phase 1 indicates that they've been removed properly, and, and that will be checked in the Phase 2. Likewise, there'll be borings and a whole host of other issues that will be undertaken as part of a Phase 2 before any demolition permit is sought. What should be said is that the corner for which the, the, has already achieved a rezoning is a gas station. And that gas station has applied some years ago in the state environmental program for leaks. I have more concerns about that and, and how to negotiate and work on the cost issues for that than any other issue. But all of those, whether it's gasoline or, as you, as you suggested, all of those will be tested and, and mandatorily fixed if, if to the extent they show up.
You're not at this time anticipating pursuing the state brownfield program?
No. There's no reason, we have no suspicion or, or concern or reason to.
Okay.
But the gas station is in that.
Great. As was referenced in your earlier comments, we are very focused on the commercial space at this location. The primary supermarket that serves the public housing residents in the Guanis area is a soft site in the Guanis rezoning, and we're very concerned that we could lose key access to healthy food and affordable food for public housing residents in our community. We are intending to memorialize this in the community benefits agreement, and just wanted to affirm your commitment to working with us as a, in providing fresh and affordable fruits and vegetables to, at prices that are affordable to public housing residents in this location.
I could say we're absolutely committed to working with you and your team on what you want for both the community space and for the retail space. I, I would say we'd prefer not to have food preparation because of the extra cost and fire and protection.
No argument there.
Yeah.
Great. And some, I think that's fine, as it relates to the community facility space as well. As Chair Riley noted, we do have three public housing developments in a media proximity list location. In the community benefits agreement, we, we will work to make best, we will hope to incorporate best efforts around local hiring with a prioritization of local nitro residents as well.
Yes.
Great.
We're open to that.
The, and then just final items. The, one is on design. We'd like for the setbacks that you shared in the proposed updated designs to be reflected in the CBA. Any concerns about that?
No. We're willing to do that.
Great. And we'd like for you to also agree to consult with the Borum Hill Association on the materiality of the site as this moves forward as well.
Be happy to consult with them.
Thank you. The last two options, the last two, three items are, are probably the most important. One, MIH option one would be our preference here. Any concerns there?
No.
Great. Secondly, it's important to us that we go above and beyond MIH in the development projects in our community. I realize that there are a lot of moving parts in the outstanding negotiations here, but are you all open to working with us to go above and beyond the floor that MIH represents to, to see if more affordable housing can be achieved at this location?
Well, we've been talking to you about that, Councilmember Wrestler, is we feel that by giving up our lease, which has over 40 years to go, so that 100 affordable housing units be constructed on the formerly leased property.
More than 100, for the record.
Yes, you've been dealing with HPD. That's terrific. Coupled with our 75 under option one, we have close to 200 affordable units generated by the project, and, and we would hope that we would not be asked to go beyond option one.
You will be asked.
And I'm sure we'll discuss it, but I, I would like to say, since you asked it in a larger forum than we typically discuss, and I applaud you for having led a process that every member of the, your community has spoken or can speak, some quite a number of times, and we have gotten a better project because of it. But the, the answer that, that you've asked for is one that those parking lots have economic value to us. They had been used for factory employees. The factory employees are essentially down to a handful. So community members, some of whom are on your community board, use that for parking. It has economic value, and, you know, we can all look at numbers, but it has a value between $5 and $8 million in present value for the life of the next 40 years. We're giving that up, and, and giving it up for all the right reasons. Likewise, the request that we give up parking has an economic cost. There are people who like cars, surprisingly, and people who want to have a parking garage, like in this previous presentation, people who want to have a parking garage.
Borough Park and Borum Hill are very different neighborhoods.
Where they reside.
They're the most transit-rich part of Brooklyn. Probably the most transit-rich part of New York, United States of America outside of the island.
And, and Atlantic Terminal is a wonderful asset for us all, and hence, planners believe in density around assets like that. So we'd like to continue talking about it, but we are, we are averse to that.
Appreciate the explanation. It will certainly be a topic of ongoing conversation in the weeks ahead. The last thing I wanted to ask about is a concern that community members and others have raised for this project, which is the potential sale of this property, and wanted to affirm, Rich, your representative, your representative's plans to be the developer of this site, and commitment that should a sale happen, that the, what is memorialized in the community benefits agreement will be incorporated into any agreement on the sale of this property.
Okay. We've been clear. You've asked the question directly, and I think we've answered it directly. I represent the owners. I am a developer. I am a New Yorker who lives in Dallas, Texas.
Nobody's perfect.
I, I will not be the developer for this project. As soon as we know the scope of the project in its totality, and because there's not a 421A, at, at present, we have time, we will go through a process and seek either a joint venture partner or a successor. I prefer a joint venture partner, however, sometimes those discussions become successors. That's why I, I think your idea or your strong request for a CBA is important. There will be a, someone who is in control, that's not me, who will have to follow that, and I, I will make sure that's part of the discussion going forward.
I appreciate that. I think that, I imagine each of the council members up here and each of our predecessors has seen time and again projects where we have a handshake agreement and a reasonable understanding with a developer, property gets sold, and all of the work that we put in to trying to make a project actually better meet the needs of our community kind of falls to the wayside. And, you know, it does provide a great source of anxiety for me, and I'm sure for many members in my community. I appreciate that we will memorialize these commitments in the community benefits agreement, but it does put a kind of shadow over this entire discussion and negotiation and agreement of what I think could be a beneficial project for our community. So I just, I have to say that on the record, that it's an area of concern, and, you know, I hope that the ultimate development team will do all of the things that we are requiring them to do through this process.
But, Councilmember, as, as you said, the CBA will be signed, and it will, you'll be assured that any joint venture or successor will be made aware of the CBA and obligated under its terms to comply with the CBA.
Look, it's not a perfect instrument. It's the best we have. We will, you know, work to make the language as tight as possible, but I think that as an institution, the city council is often frustrated by our limitations on how we can force developers to do the things that they say they're going to do. And, you know, when things, when properties change hands, it gets even harder. And so we will, we'll do our best here. We know that you'll work, you'll work hard in the weeks ahead to try to meet the needs of our community, but I, I just want to say again, this is an area of real concern.
Understood.
Thank you, Council, thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. Any other council members have any questions?
Can I, actually, I just, I forgot to thank the council land use staff. Thank you to the council land use staff for all your hard work, Julie and Brian, on this. I, I apologize.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. There mean no questions for this applicant panel. You are now excused. Counselor, any members of the public who was to testify on 280 Bergen Street, proposed remotely or in person?
Chair, we have two members of the public to testify remotely that are in the hearing. So while they're being promoted, I'll make an announcement, and also, if there's anyone here to testify on this project, please see one of the sergeants to submit a card. So for the two of you that are waiting to testify, know that you will be called in as a panel, and when you're ready to, when you hear your name being called, please prepare to speak when the chair says that you may begin. Please also know that once you're finished with your testimony, you will be removed for the meet, from the meeting as a group, and once removed, you may continue to view the live stream of the hearing on the council website. We will now hear from the first panel, which is made up of Howard Collins and Logan Ferris. I'm sorry, Logan, if I'm mispronouncing your name. So we'll hear from Howard Collins first.
Starting time.
Okay, thank you very much for the time. The Borum Hill Association supports the zoning with reservations. Only a few years ago, a more appropriate six-story building would have been constructed, however, with MIH, nine stories, as are reflected in this proposal. This building will tower over the adjacent four-story brown zones on Bergen Street and also on Wyckoff. It runs counter to the traditional zoning that calls for lower-height mid-block than can be found on Third Avenue. However, we understand and support the need for affordable housing at all levels, so affordable units in our transit-rich environment are welcome. We'd like most of them to be at 60% rather than 80% AMI. We've talked about the CBA. We want one that binds this developer or any successor to building with the appropriate materials that respect their surroundings and the setbacks previously mentioned. The CBA needs to let the community define the use of ground-floor community space, and we certainly could use a job training center, computer lab, or pre-K. Councilmember Wrestler's concept of low-cost, truly affordable housing on the city-owned HPD lots is a worthy goal, and we fully support it. While the 33rd District has gained thousands of affordable units, the majority are not deeply affordable. We simply do not have enough of these units. Senior housing would be a welcome addition here. However, we are uncomfortable with the projected timetable. The market-rate building will go forward, and the 100% affordable units will follow later, and we do need them. We are assured that clear commitments will be made from the city to build this affordable housing, and we'd like that to be before the zoning is approved, and we realize that's probably not possible. Communities should include all of us. For decades, Borum Hill residents have longed for green space in the form of a dog run. For many, many years, we've waited for something to happen on this block, particularly at that large parking lot at Wyckoff and Nevin's. The PS 261 and 38 school yards provide recreational space, but a dog run is a different type of amenity that is truly treasured by the community. Borum Hill does have, has very, very little green space. We have many community facilities, although. We are getting a new jail, a new shelter, and we applaud the recently opened IC and supportive housing. We do not say no, but we'd like to see something as amenity for the community. We seek balance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Howard. The next testimony we're going to have is from Logan Ferris. Logan, you may begin if you can hear me.
Starting time.
Great. Thank you, Chair Riley, Councilmember Wrestler, and members of the subcommittee for the opportunity to share testimony in support of this project. My name is Logan Ferris, and I serve as the political director of Open New York. Open New York is an independent grassroots pro-housing nonprofit. New York is in a housing crisis. Available jobs in the city have grown far faster than the number of homes, meaning that renters are competing for the same number of apartments, and landlords hold all of the bargaining power. Right now, New Yorkers are facing rent increases of up to 50, 60, 70% as rent discounts offered during the pandemic expire. Homelessness is at the highest rate since the Great Depression. There are over 14,000 children who sleep in city shelters each night, and our shelter system is unequipped to provide shelter and services to asylum seekers, in no small part because of shelter overcrowding. One of the many needed long-term solutions to this is to build more housing. This project would This project would create over three hundred residential units, including seventy-four affordable units, both of which are sorely needed in a city that is facing a severe housing shortage. The proposal would also allow for retail and community space. The neighborhood, this neighborhood is exactly where we should focus efforts to build more housing. The median household income in 2019 for this community district was a hundred and seventeen thousand, over sixty percent more than the citywide median income, and the community is well-served by a number of transit options. Well-resourced neighborhoods such as Borum Hill must do their fair share to build more housing. Open New York is supportive of all efforts to maximize the number of affordable units in this project, and we are particularly excited about the opportunity for two nearby city-owned lots to be developed into deeply affordable housing as part of the rezoning. We also hope to see the parking waiver to remove all required off-street parking from this project approved. We need to house people, not cars, and renters who do not own cars should no longer be forced to subsidize those who do through higher rents. The city's failure to produce enough housing has real and direct human consequences. High rents, placement pressure, segregation, increased tenant harassment, homelessness, and countless other problems. We encourage the council to vote yes on this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Are there any council members with questions for this panel? There being no questions for this panel, the witness panel is now excused. Counselor, are there any more members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
Chair, there are no members of the public who signed up to testify, so we can probably do a last call and then close the hearing. So, if there's any members of the public wishing to testify, either remotely or online, either raise your hand via Zoom, or if you can see one of the sergeants. It doesn't look that there's any other members, so we can close the hearing.
Thank you, counsel. There being no other members of the public who was to testify on pre-considered LUs related to ULP number C-220188ZMK and N-220189ZRK relating to the 280 Bergen Street rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the item is laid over. To continue with today's meeting, I will now open the public hearing on pre-considered LUs relating to ULPs number C-220312ZMK and N-220313ZRK relating to the Innovative Urban Village ENY CCC rezoning proposal in Councilmember Barron's district in Queens. This application seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the existing R5 to R7-2/C2-4 zoning district and a related zoning text amendment to map an MIH program area. For anyone wishing to testify on this item remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online, and you may do that now by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. And once again, for anyone with us in person, please see one of the sergeants at arms to appear and submit a speaker's card. Counsel, please call the first panel for this item.
Melanie, I may need your help in case there's any of you that I'm not mentioning, but the panel for this item is Brian Kelly, Reverend A.R. Bernard, Kirk Goodrich, Melanie Myers, and Vishan Chakrabarti. Did I miss anyone? All right.
Counsel, please administer the affirmation.
Can you please raise your right hand and answer the following question into the mic? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the subcommittee and in your answer to all council member questions?
Thank you for the viewing public. If you need a accessible version of this presentation, please send us an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin. Panelists, as you begin, I'll just ask that you please restate your name and organization for the record. You may begin.
Okay, there we go. Good. Good morning, counsel. Thank you for the opportunity to share our vision with you. I'm Reverend A.R. Bernard, the pastor and founder of Christian Cultural Center, a joint venture partner in this development project. If we can go to slide three. Just to give you a little bit of backstory, it's been a six-year journey to this moment. It began with a diligent search to find the right development partner, one who shared our values and philosophy for community transformation. That shared values partnership was realized, identified, and formalized with Gotham, Pow Architects, and Menadnok. Continuous meetings with local stakeholders, community leaders, elected officials to get their input was a number-one priority in this process. Out of those meetings came major adjustments to our plan as we worked diligently to strike the right balance between affordability and feasibility. Our local electeds, Charles and Ines Baron, were extremely helpful with this process. From the beginning, the Urban Village has been driven by a philosophy supported by four pillars: environment, people, programs, and sustainability. East New York has come a long way over the last half-century. The introduction of Starett City in the 1970s, the Nehemiah Program in the 1980s, Gateway Center, Shirley Chisholm Park, and continued affordable housing development in the area has made a big difference in the quality of life for many marginalized New Yorkers. The last decade has seen aggressive urban renewal and programs, and specifically addressing the social problems that have plagued our community for years. Christian Cultural Center's presence in the community has helped to reduce sex trafficking, gangs, and drugs along the Flatlands Avenue corridor, improving the quality of life for our local residents. Through the Urban Village program and project, we have an opportunity to build on that legacy of positive change. Our vision is to provide a sustainable community that allows for upward mobility for lower-income bands without having to leave the community they grew up in, not just with housing, but a quality of life with all the ingredients that make a livable, walkable community of people living and thriving together. Urban Village seeks to change the narrative that the only way up is out. It affords a more educated and upwardly mobile generation to stay in their community, contributing their creative, innovative, and intellectual capital while protecting the lower and working class from the threats of gentrification. It includes rentals, homeownership, retail, commercial, medical, educational, vocational training, cultural, and community spaces, a cyber café, twenty-four-hour childcare, and a performing arts center. There's a lot of excitement in the community around this project, and we believe it's a model that can be accomplished when the spirit of collaboration is present between government, not-for-profit, and the private sector. It's a project that I believe we can all take pride in. Next slide, please. The guiding principles, of course, the pillars that I shared with you. The Urban Village is envisioned as an ecosystem of opportunity in which community members can live, grow, and have access to the tools and amenities needed to truly thrive. Income-based, intergenerational affordable housing, neighborhood-focused retail, community facilities and amenities, education and jobs, green living, cultural arts, and open space. Next slide, please. The key to prosperity, we believe, for our community are opportunities, opportunities that can serve from birth through every stage of their lives. Twenty-four-seven daycare, novel concept that can assist our working parents when they have overnight shifts or are working when school is dismissed. A cyber café. We need to eradicate the digital divide. Our kids can use the café to research school assignments, apply for colleges, use remote learning, be part of a digital community, and actually have the tools in their possession to do better, do much better than what's afforded to them currently. Workforce training center. Having the skills to enter the workforce or re-enter society serves as a tool to overcome barriers to economic mobility. The center will complement the vision of Urban Village by providing local community residents to access to skills-based training and opportunities to work on the construction of this project and others in the area. Next slide, please. Overview of our plan. The master plan community in CCC's ten-and-a-half-acre East New York campus consists of ten new buildings, open space, a street network to be constructed in phases over an approximate ten-year period. Creation of approximately nineteen hundred and seventy-five units of one hundred percent rent-stabilized, intergenerational, income-based workforce housing. The residential plan affords the plan a mix of new community facilities, neighborhood commercial, and recreational uses to create a twenty-first-century urban community. Next slide, please. Convenience, neighborhood retail, including fresh food grocery, cultural resources, including a performing arts center, a focus on green living, and increase in publicly accessible open space, including a children's playground, active rooftop recreation space, and a central quad. A trade school, as I mentioned, for workforce development, twenty-four-seven daycare, and adjacent children's playground. A shuttle service to nearby subway stations to access public transportation in this two-fair zone. Next slide, please. I'm going to turn it over now to our architect, Vishan Chakravarti.
Good morning, council members. Thank you, Reverend Bernard. It's an honor to be here. It's a privilege to be designing this great project. The slide in front of you is showing you the context of this site. As the reverend said, it's about a ten-and-a-half-acre site located on Flatlands Avenue, between Louisiana Avenue to the west and Pennsylvania Avenue to the east, Starett City to the south. The context varies quite a bit in terms of larger towers like Starett City, NYCHA housing, as well as some two- and three-story housing off to the west. It is in Council District Forty-two. The existing zoning is R5, and the closest transportation in terms of the subway is the terminus of the Number Three and the Number L train, and there are a variety of bus lines as well. Next slide, please. From the beginning, with the pastor and with Gotham, there has been an idea for the physical layout of this project that embodies the pillars that the pastor spoke about. First of all, that the site be public, that it be a destination. What you see in this drawing is that little baseball-shaped element is the existing Christian Cultural Center. Next to that, we've planned for a major public space, as well as other community facilities, and then a strong street wall of housing along Flatlands, Louisiana, and Pennsylvania, a lot of solar access from the south, and a lot of porosity to the existing street grid. Next, please. We've been following a lot of the principles that Jane Jacobs laid out, but typically not for neighborhoods like East New York, so it's a pleasure to bring some of these principles to a place like East New York, including mixed use, small blocks, a mix of existing and new structures, and activated streetscapes. We've been working very hard to make sure that every street has storefronts, housing entrances, and so forth, so that the place is made safe by the community and by the residents and by street activation in terms of all the variety of uses that would go on there. Next, please. This image gives you an image of the, gives you a sense of the scale. This is the heart of the central quad. You see to the right of that is the new performing arts center for about three hundred seats, as the reverend mentioned. There is a commitment from Gotham for very high-quality buildings here in terms of both materiality, probably the use of a lot of brick, as well as high-quality windows and so forth, and high-quality landscape in terms of the landscape design. Next, please. I mentioned that the, all of the open space is meant to be publicly accessible. There's a major open space on the corner of Louisiana and Flatlands that leads you into a network of open spaces around the Christian Cultural Center in the proposal and to a central quad. The blue arrows are showing how the new street grid in the site connects to the existing street grid all around it. I should mention that on the site, that of the ten-and-a-half acres, about three acres, including the streets, including the streets and sidewalks, are public open space, and six acres of the ten-and-a-half acres are open to the sky. So, it is quite a porous, airy site plan. Next, please. On the corner of Pennsylvania and Louisiana, excuse me, on the corner of Pennsylvania and Flatlands, we are planning for a fresh food grocer, as the reverend mentioned. Next, please. In terms of building heights, as the reverend stated, we've been at this for about six years, and in the last iteration, if you just go to the next slide, you can see that we've lowered building heights in response to community and council member concerns. The building heights were originally about ten to seventeen stories. They are about nine to fifteen stories now. I should mention that Starett City to the south is about twenty stories, nine to fourteen stories, excuse me. Thank you, Melanie. Next, please. In terms of sustainability, and I don't, you know, if there are questions about this, we can talk about this in detail, but we are planning for sustainable buildings to the extent that we can make them here, including open space, which of course helps with stormwater retention and so forth. And then, the last couple of slides just give you some more images of the design. Next, please. This shows you the corner of Louisiana and Flatlands. That is the existing church that you see, the lower building in the corner. If you're familiar with this corner today, it is fenced off. This would be completely open to the public, and there would be this sense of a gateway into the site from the ball fields and from Louisiana. And then, next. And then, within the site, one of the things that we heard from the council member, local council member, and the community was a desire for materials like brick and a desire for a modulation in scale. So, we have everything from sort of lower two-story masonettes that feel like brownstone environment all the way up to the fourteen-story building. So, it isn't at all a monolithic site plan. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brian Kelly from Gotham, who's going to talk about affordability and other aspects of the project.
Good morning, Brian Kelly with the Gotham Organization. It's an honor to be here. It's an honor to be a partner of CCC and Pastor, as well as the rest of our team. I'd also like to open by saying our affordability plan is a byproduct of community outreach. I would say the correct words are is that it's custom-made. It's custom-made after communicating with the community board, tenant associations, local not-for-profits, and our most esteemed elected officials, including the barons. That custom-made plan has led to a process that has evolved in terms of our affordability. We originally were entering the ULP certification process and had bans that went as high as one hundred twenty percent of the citywide AMI. Citywide AMI for a four-person household is a hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred dollars. We eliminated that ban at one-twenty. So, we entered the ULP certification, if you can go to the next slide, with thirty to sixty AMI being half of our homes, twenty-five percent of our homes between sixty and eighty, and twenty-five between eighty and a hundred. As we entered the ULP process and the certification, there were nearly a dozen meetings, whether phone calls, Zooms, or public meetings with the community board, as well as participation by our esteemed council member, Baron. It was clear from those meetings that a variety of changes were needed to be made. Next slide. Those changes were first and foremost that the community did not feel that one hundred percent at AMI for rentals was a fit. Our team huddled up and gave that a lot of thought, and looking at where the 2020 AMIs landed, we agreed. We eliminated it. Moreover, the community and the council member expressed concern that only fifty percent of the homes were between thirty and sixty AMI. We made a major change. We increased that to sixty percent of all rental homes between thirty and fifty. I'll talk more specifically about what thirty to fifty means. Fifteen percent between fifty and sixty, and twenty-five at sixty to eighty, eighty being the upper income limit. That for all of the rentals. The one thousand eight hundred and seventy-five rentals would include two hundred rental units for seniors. Homeownership is a key component of our plan as well. The homeownership would be included in those beautiful masonettes you saw on the interior street, as well as within a future condo building within the master plan. Homeownership would be also included for economic mobility. As Pastor said, it's the way in, not the way out. So, we want to create economic mobility. We would include at least a hundred affordable homeownership homes between masonettes and condos, half up to ninety AMI and half up to a hundred AMI. To maximize the marketing band of those homes, we would price the ninety at eighty-three percent AMI, and the one hundred AMI, we would price at ninety-three. I can give example later, later, what that price point would mean. Next slide, please. Affordability is a function of the community. So, we did take a hard look at what those community incomes are, and that tailored our commitment to the affordability plan, which I just presented. Approximately fifty percent of households within CB5 earn between twenty-five thousand and one hundred thousand. The average household income, based on the American Community Survey data for 2019, is fifty-six thousand, one hundred and three, and the median household income is thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-three. That informed our substantial and massive commitment to deep affordability. As I mentioned earlier... As I mentioned earlier, no less than 60% of the homes would be between 30 and 50 AMI. Very specifically, of those 60%, 20 would be at 30 AMI, 20 would be at 40 AMI, and 20 would be at 50 AMI. I would say on a national scale, that is one of the most ambitious, most affordable housing plans in the country. 15% of the homes will be at 50 AMI to 60. That's approximately 281 homes of the 1,875 rentals. And then, the moderate income from 60 to AMI is paramount, for a number of reasons. Economic mobility being one. Secondly, is it cross-subsidizes the ability to provide the deep affordability. Our overall plan provides a weighted average AMI of 53%. That is at the lower end of the spectrum of the ELLA term sheet published by the New York City HPD, that being one of the most significant avenues for us to produce deep affordable housing. The rentals at the 60 AMI, as I mentioned, cross-subsidize the 30 and 40 and 50 AMI. What does that mean? It costs approximately $8,000 per unit to operate a brand-new building, not including a mortgage payment. At 30 and 40 AMI, at those rents, they are essentially insufficient to cover operating expense. So the economic ecosystem and the variety of incomes work together as a whole, so that income averaging makes this sustainable economically. Next slide, please. The senior units will be allocated between studios and one-bedrooms. Of the 1,875 rentals, we will include 200 senior housing units. Until last evening, we were at 65 to 75% of those at studios. The council member and community board members had a discussion with us and asked that we increase the number of one-bedrooms, and we are committed to doing so. The non-senior rentals are targeted to a diverse household size and mix. We would have 50% of our rentals as two- and three-bedrooms, to ensure that we accommodate larger household sizes. We would have no more than 25% studios, and the balance would be one-bedrooms. All of the rental apartments in every single building will be proportionally allocated by income band and at unit type, meaning the household size. Another important consideration is even up to 80 AMI, those with rental assistance will be accessible to our plan. So if you're making 50% AMI, and you have rental assistance, and there are no more 50% AMI units available, you could gain access to an 80% AMI home. So this is an equitable model that follows fair housing. Last, but very important to CB5, is that there is a 50% community board preference. We fully support it. Next slide, please. Exemplary of what the rents are, these rents are specifically from the New York City HPD rent calculator. They include a utility allowance for electric, as well as an electric stove. It gives you a clear eyesight from studios, all the way to three-bedrooms, on what the rents would be for the deepest affordability of 30 AMI and 40, to the highest income band at 80. All are reflective of a deep discount compared to the free market in Brooklyn. With that, thank you. Now I'll pass it along to Melanie Myers to discuss the land use actions.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. My name is Melanie Myers. I am an attorney with Fried Frank and Land Use Counsel for the applicant. There are four actions before the subcommittee today. The first is a zoning map amendment. It would be rezoning the project from the existing R5 zoning to R72 with the C24 overlay, and that would allow for the mixture of uses in housing that have been described by the team, as well as the nearly 2,000 units of affordable housing on the site. The second action is a zoning text amendment. The first part of that amendment is an amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution, and that would bring the site into an MIH site under optional one. The second text amendment is an amendment to Appendix F, I'm sorry, I of the zoning resolution, and that will put the site into the transit zone. The third action is a large-scale special permit that will allow for adjustments to yards, heightened setback in distance between buildings, and that will allow for the site plan that's been presented. It will establish the development envelopes, and it will include the requirements to create the private street network, as well as the open space within the project. And then, finally, the fourth action before the subcommittee is for a special permit for a 500-space public parking garage, and that will allow for the surface parking that exists today to be replaced with a garage, and that will allow for the Performing Arts Center, the open space, and the housing in those areas. So we appreciate your time. As has been said, we've, this has been a long process, one that benefited greatly from all of the outreach and from the years of discussion. It was reflected in the positive recommendations that we received from the community board and borough president in city planning, and we thank you for your time. And with that, I will turn it over to the Reverend. We can go to the next slide, please.
Thank you, Melanie. Next slide. In closing, let me just restate, CCC is a long-term stakeholder in the neighborhood, 10 years at 1,400 Linden Boulevard, and the last 22 years at the 12020 Flatlands address. There's no direct or indirect displacement in this project. It's 100% income-based workforce housing. Income-based affordability and rent stabilization allows for families to stay and grow in the community. The integration of affordable housing, community facility services, and retail. I'm excited about it. I think the community is excited about it, and again, I believe it's a model to be emulated. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. I'm excited about this project. This is a beautiful project. I just want to commend Councilmember Baron for his negotiation skills and making sure that this is deeply affordable, 100% affordability, is what we really need, especially in areas like that. So Councilmember Baron, kudos to you. Just a few questions. Can you please confirm the homeless units that you will be setting aside for this project? If any.
Yes. So there are two facets to that. The first is, the council member asked us to include 20% within the 30% AMI band for formerly homeless, and we have committed to doing so. That would be if there were state funding. If there is city funding pursuant to city council law, we would also comply with the council member's request, but would have to provide 15% of all of the units to be formerly homeless, which our experience is that it tends to be families in shelter who need housing stability, so we're very excited about that. So the answer to both is yes.
Thank you. Can you explain the origins of this proposal? When did you first begin working on a proposal to redevelop the unused portions of the Christian Cultural Center property, and how did the partnership with Gotham arise? And how did you decide on the proposed density, height, and mixture of uses?
As I stated in my introduction, this goes back some six years in process. We spent the first two years, from 2014 to 2016, to identify the right partners, partners who would share our philosophy, our values, and we found that with Gotham. And then, we spent 2016 to 2017 ironing out a joint venture agreement, because it is a 50-50 partnership between Christian Cultural Center and Gotham. So I hope that answers your question.
Thank you. And can you please explain how did you decide on the proposed density, height, and mixture of uses?
Yeah. So adding on to what Pastor mentioned is that the density and the height was really a function of six years of charrette and outreach. For example, council member, we originally had at the corner of Flatlands Avenue and Pennsylvania 22-story building. We've gone through three or four master plan iterations. So that's meeting at different tenant, with different tenant associations. Five years ago, Pastor and I went to the facility that Man Up runs in the community to give a presentation, that which is an open public meeting, just to get thoughts and ideas from folks. So it was way before the concept of ULP, meeting with not-for-profit organizations and local stakeholders, including folks like Bill Wilkins, the East New York Local Development Corporation. So the virtues created our first iteration, but five years of outreach, revisions, and changing, and stretching, and revising, really led us to where we are, and the changes have also been ongoing, including at the community board process, and now through where we are. And I think that's been successful. I pride myself on being able to say with Pastor and our partners in the community, we received a 29 to 1 vote in favor at the community board. It's a great community board. It's a tough community board, but they, they want to earn your trust, and we feel like we've developed and created, and will continue to build that relationship.
Thank you. Would the full project be built in phases, and how many years do you anticipate it would take to be fully completed?
Our estimates pursuant to the FEIS are 10 years. It will be developed in phases. It would be developed from Pennsylvania Avenue, working westerly towards Louisiana. We have a restrictive declaration that we've signed, that city planning has a hold of, on how we would build each phase, the open spaces we would build and commit to, what the quality of them includes, including down to the last planter, and street tree, and bench, and the material of the curbs and roads. And over that 10-year period, we would work our way all the way through to build each phase. We expect there would be five phases, 10 years, which would generate this overall community.
Thank you. Do you have plans for how to fund the non-residential portions of the development, such as the Workforce Training Center and the Performing Arts Center?
We do. That creates and requires, in some sense, ingenuity, so fundraising being one, which we think this team is very well-suited to do. Also, there are many other ways to provide for those, including debt financing, new markets, tax credits, grants. So there's a whole variety of capital we can leverage to create those centers. The Workforce Development Center is paramount to this project. We're in conversations already with stakeholders on curriculum, the size of the space within CCC that we're retrofitting, and to ensure that that engine is built and running when we put our shovel in the ground for the first building, because the point of it is to be an economic engine for the community.
And there's excitement around fundraising, especially with the Performing Arts Center. We have individuals who are committed. One is actually in Italy shooting a film called, I think it's Equalizer 3, and no names mentioned. But there's a lot of excitement and fundraising that's going to go into the Performing Arts Center.
Thank you, Reverend. This site is relatively far from the subway. Do you have any plans to offer shuttle services or work with DOT to improve safety for pedestrians along the walking route?
Yes. So from, actually, part of the original plans was to include, aside from the fact that the site has six different bus lines, including two express that provides transit directly or indirectly to the three and the L, both stops, a shuttle that would be equitably available to all residences, that would run a route from the site to the L, as well as to the three. It would probably make at least two, possibly three cycles per hour during weekdays in the AM commute, during the afternoon in the PM, call it peak work commute, and then on Sundays to help alleviate the obvious congestion resulting from CCC's operations, but which is key to the community. So it's an amenity, not based on income, it's an amenity based on one living at the urban village, or attending or utilizing one of the community amenities like the Performing Arts Center, CCC, the Workforce Development Center. So the site is supported by public transportation from subway, which is walkable, it's within or less than a half a mile, the buses, which there are over six routes, plus the shuttle. Also key to that is the design of our plan was to make it livable and walkable, and to ensure that those amenities are at residents' fingertips. East New York has a lot of drive-up retail, and our retail is designed to be accessible by, by foot traffic.
Thank you. Just to continue with that question, the CCC is an amazing organization. Do you plan to handle any of the influx on the car, from cars, on days when the CCC is hosting services or events?
Absolutely. We've had 22 years of practice with that, and we will continue to upgrade our services to that effect.
Thank you, Reverend Bernard. Do you have a plan to place to ensure local hiring, MWBE participation during construction?
Absolutely. Affirmatively, yes. The Workforce Development Center is going to be launched with construction of the first building specifically for that. Also, working through the HPD buildup program, targeting absolute best efforts for 30% MWBE participation. So we view this as an ecosystem between MWBEs, the training skills, as well as the Workforce Development Center, and then working with organizations like the East New York Local Development Corporation, the DUC Community Board, Man Up, other local organizations to ensure that there's visibility, there's skills to identify, to increase mobility within the workforce, and that to have long-term access to these opportunities.
Thank you, Brian. And lastly, which is very important, sustainability and resiliency. The measures, I know you briefly talked about, but can you just go into more depth? What sustainability and resiliency measures are incorporated into building design and construction, such as incorporating blue and green white roof treatment, passive house, rain gardens, solar panels, or wind turbines?
Yeah. I'll provide some thoughts, and Vishan can add in as well. I'll start with the buildings themselves. We prided ourselves on developing building envelopes before many others did by not having a, call it the holes in the wall, the PTACs. So our building, with the exception of generator and potentially using gas for hot water, will be all-electric, from stoves to how it's heated and cooled, to how it's lit, sensors, and then the envelope would be super tight, like a passive house. Passive house is great, but again, it's an acronym and a plaque, we're into creating the end result. So the building would be substantially all-electric. The buildings would include a significant amount of green roofs, but also, more importantly, active roofs. So we tend to program our interior amenity spaces, which includes children's playrooms, computer labs, which we're definitely going to have, because it's a mitigation measure within our EIS, and social lounges, so like to the modern-day co-living and co-working. And those spaces tend to be accessible from outdoor spaces at rooftops. So we want to create active spaces, and then separately have all the other roofs be green, or white roofs, to comply. All of our appliances, all of our materials would be forward-looking, Energy Star, our envelope would be super tight. And then, from the ground floor up, the site plan includes a massive amount of storm detention. That is to control flow into the sewer systems, which is absolutely paramount to resiliency, including a major flood event. The vast majority of our site is not in a flood area, but we're still taking those measures. Moreover, as Vishan mentioned earlier, over three acres of our site is green, and over six acres is open to the sky. So environment to us is not only materials, but is also the quality of life. Every single building has light and air exposure on 360 degrees on the side, there's no infill development. That, the systems, the quality of the environment, is health. The rest, a lot of are code-driven, and are check-the-box. We feel like we meet both.
Okay. My last question, the parking. How many parking spots did you stay?
So the plan includes nearly 400 residential parking spaces. The vast majority of them are located on their buildings 1 to 4, so I'll call that Phase 1A and Phase 1B. There's also some residential parking, including in the last phase or two. Separately, there is a 500-space public parking garage specifically allocated for CCC's functions, which is primarily driven for Sundays, but will be complimentary to benefit the commercial, retail, community facilities, like the Performing Arts Center, the Workforce Development, et cetera, because if you're sleeping on a Sunday morning, and you haven't gone to church, or synagogue, or worship somewhere, and you're in bed, well, you can't go move your car to allow a congregant to park. So we created separate and distinct parking facilities that will be controlled, so that residents have peace and quiet and enjoyment in use.
Okay. Is there any, like, charging stations in the parking garages that you're thinking about?
That's very important nowadays, absolutely. We will have EV parking. I don't know if it's by law required yet for a certain amount, but we will definitely have EV parking. At the time we break ground for the later phases, it may be the only thing.
Yeah, because you said 10 years, so I'm just thinking about how the car, you know, dynamics are going within New York City or across the nation. I think electric cars are going to be more, you know, proficient and, you know, out there more, so just to think about.
We, we just opened up one of our new affordable housing buildings called Gotham Point in Long Island City on the waterfront, and we've installed 15 EV chargers voluntarily, so it's something we believe in.
Thank you, Brian. And council members have any questions? All right. Chair Lewis?
No questions, just want to give remarks. It sounds like you're in support chair, so that's a good thing. I just wanted to tell you that I'm a Starett City kid, I grew up in Starett City, and just to see the upward mobility of East New York, just lets us know that this project is going to bring sustainability to this neighborhood, to this community. I'm really happy, Councilmember. I'm really happy Councilmember Baron is in support. As you mentioned, he has great negotiation skills. And I want to thank this team for taking the recommendations of the community board and working through it. I knew, I know it was challenging, but the fact that you were able to sit with the community to get to where you needed to be and where they would have liked you to be um, is a good thing. So I'm in full support of this project and want to thank you for your diligence.
Thank you Councilwoman.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you Chair. Uh, there being no other questions for this applicant panel, you are now excused. Counselor, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on innovative urban village proposal in person or remotely?
Believe we have one person here to testify in person and several that are here remotely. So I can make the announcements chair for the remote panels and then you can call on the first witness. So for members of the public, Brian, um, William.
William Wilkins?
If you want to set up while I make the announcement, sorry. For members of the public here to testify, please note that witnesses will be called in panels of four. If you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepared to speak when the chair or I say that you may begin. Please also note that once all panelists in your group have completed their testimony remotely, you will be removed from the meeting as a group and the next group of speaker will be, will be introduced. Once removed, participants may continue to view the live stream broadcast of this hearing on the council's website.
Thank you Council. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak. Please do not begin until the Sergeant Arms has started the clock. Uh, Mr. Wilkins, uh, just state your name for the record and then you may begin.
Okay, um, my name is Bill Wilkins. I'm the Executive Director for the Local Development Corporation of East New York, East Brooklyn Bid, and also East Brooklyn Housing Development Corporation. By virtue of the multiple affiliates under my direction provides me with a unique perspective on both economic development and housing development. Additionally, I've worked in East New York for the past twenty-two years. I've also lived in East New York for thirty-two years and I live thirteen blocks from the project site. Um, the LDC has been in service, the East Brooklyn community for over forty years, growing businesses, changing lives, and strengthening communities. I believe this project reaches that trifecta of doing all three. Um, we've been involved as the first, um, one of the first business improvement districts in the city, also the first industrial bid. By virtue of housing, I've also been a part of, as a nonprofit partner, in the erection of over five hundred units of housing. And we're right now in the ground at fifteen-ten Broadway. I believe I have a unique perspective on economic development and housing development. This project I submit is a confluence of a lot of energy, of a lot of outreach, of a lot of stakeholders really weighing in and I believe is something that's heavenly, to be honest. It is heavenly to sit before you of a project that I cannot poke any holes at. It brings into the envelope all of the necessary elements that we need in East New York as we start to see the Manhattanization of Brooklyn finally reach our shores. And what's imperative is that those indigenous businesses, residents and institutions that have experienced decade, decades of neglect finally are at the table to shape what the transformation is going to be. By touching all of the buckets, which includes parking, and I submit to you, parking is extremely important, even if it's transit-rich. I don't know what those other panelists were talking about, but you talk to residents, they're looking for parking and people are taking a lot of time. But it's parking, it's vocational training, there's home ownership, there's residential, there's seniors, it's affordable bands. So this is truly what we call bottom-up, um, development. Instead of having developers who are interlopers, poachers and outsiders coming in to exploit assets in our community, this is the reverse of that. It's bottom-up development and also middle-out with the home ownership application. Um, so I thank you for your, I thank you for the time to present my comments today.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. You are now excused, thank you. The next panel that we're going to be calling up remotely, Aaron Sanders, David Velez, Caitlin Schuster, Rick Russo. And first I would like to call on Aaron Sanders to begin.
Starting time.
Good afternoon Chair Riley and members of the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises. My name is Aaron Sanders and I'm the Public Policy Director at the Association for a Better New York. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony on behalf of ADNY. On August twenty-fourth of this year, I delivered testimony to the City Planning Commission in support of this project. Today I hope to convey to the committee the importance of this project and its value to East New York. ADNY is a nonprofit organization representing community stakeholders, including corporations, nonprofits, unions, government authorities, educational, cultural, and health institutions dedicated to the advancement and support of New York City's people, communities, and businesses. ADNY's mission is to promote connections between the public and private sectors to make New York City a better place to live, work, and visit for all. The Innovative Urban Village Project is vital to the community of East New York, Brooklyn housing. Uh, insecurity and affordability are problems that persist in New York City aggregately. However, neighborhoods like East New York are facing the brunt of this crisis. According to a May twenty-twenty-two report from the Association from, for Neighborhood and Housing Development, the rate of evictions for every one thousand filings was twenty-five point two percent. Community Board Five in Brooklyn ranks in the top twenty, uh, in, in evictions. Since this data shows that only nine percent of affordable housing stock was available to residents who live in East New York. In other words, there's a scarcity of housing for those who need it most. Notably, in the same year, thirty-three percent of households were categorized as severely rent burdened. And twenty-nine percent of those households were surveyed, uh, to be generally rent burdened. This data suggests that the housing crisis is negatively impacting the residents of East New York. Importantly, this project received overwhelming support from Community Board Five during its review at the ULC stage. This project received a favorable vote of twenty-two to, to one. A vote of this magnitude shows community consensus around this project. In conclusion, after reviewing the merits of this project and the thoughtful recommendations from various stakeholders, ADNY supports the development of the Innovative Urban Village. This project encourages economic growth, sustainable housing, and innovative childcare options for New Yorkers. And we encourage the committee to consider this comprehensive value add of this project to this Brooklyn community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you Aaron. The next, uh, testimony will come from David Velez. David, if you hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Good morning. I am David Velez, I'm the Environmental Consultant with VHB for the project and I was just available for questions only.
Okay, thank you David. Uh, the next person to testify will be Caitlin Schuster. Caitlin, if you hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Thanks so much, good morning Chair Riley and committee members. Uh, my name is Caitlin Schuster, I'm here today representing SCIU Local Thirty-two BJ. Thirty-two BJ is the largest property service workers union in New York, representing over eighty-five thousand union members across the city. Our union is in strong support of this project. Thirty-two BJ is happy to show support for developers who invest in the communities where they build. Our union supports new development that upholds industry standards and provides opportunities for working families to not just survive, but thrive. That's why we are here in support today. The Developer Innovative Urban Village has demonstrated that they intend to invest in the community where this project will be built. To start, the developer reached out to Thirty-two BJ early in the process and is committed to creating prevailing wage jobs for the workers who will permanently staff this site. We estimate that the rezoning will allow for the creation of over thirty new property service jobs. Good jobs like these mean prevailing wages, meaningful benefits, and a pathway to the middle class for the local community members who tend to fill such positions. In addition to the important job creation that will come from this project, the developer has proposed the construction of thousands of units of badly needed affordable housing. This development will create nearly one thousand nine hundred truly affordable rental units. This is new housing that our members, many of whom are longtime residents of Central Brooklyn, and our neighbors badly need as the housing crisis worsens. Uh, and of course, as we've heard, beyond, uh, good jobs and affordable housing, there are, uh, numerous other benefits included in this development that make it worthy of approval. For all of these reasons, Thirty-two BJ is in strong support of this rezoning. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. The last person to testify on this panel is Rick Russo. Rick, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Rick, you have to unmute.
Sorry about that.
It's all right.
Good afternoon, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Rick Russo and I am the Chief Operating Officer at the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce. And I am delivering testimony on behalf of Randy Pierce, President and CEO of the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, a borough-wide membership and economic development organization dedicated to helping businesses through four channels. Promotion, support, advocacy, and convening. The Brooklyn Chamber believes this development is beneficial for East New York and its residents. First and foremost, the Christian Cultural Center is a reputable, longstanding community member that has the best interest of the community at heart. This project will create housing opportunities for families of various sizes and incomes. Their plans call for nearly two thousand units of rental housing, all of which would be income restricted, ranging from thirty percent to one hundred percent of AMI, and two hundred units of which would be set aside for seniors and most vulnerable population. There is also one hundred units of affordable homeownership that will provide our residents and families the ability to establish themselves here for the long-term and build generational wealth. Secondly, the plan will create opportunities for local entrepreneurs and business owners to open businesses and employ its neighbors. The center plans to incorporate a host of services and amenities that will not only serve the residents of the new buildings, but the broader community as well. This will benefit residents from across the street as well as the broader East New York neighborhood. These services include GED programs, childcare programs, career counseling, vocational training, a performing arts center, and open green space, to name a few. Based on our experience in Brooklyn and East New York specifically, we believe it will drive economic growth and benefits to the local business community. It creates a total of one thousand nine hundred seventy-five units of housing. The plans are for all these housing units to be income-based and affordable. A large portion of these units will be reserved for households with lower incomes, ensuring that members of the East New York community can afford to move in. Also, two hundred of these affordable housing units will be reserved for seniors and one hundred units will be designated for homeownership. It includes many benefits that will be available to the public.
Time expired.
Performing arts center, school playground, twenty-four-seven childcare, green space, retail, parking, and shuttle service to nearby train stations. And it creates economic opportunities for community members. This project will create locations for local businesses that serve our community to open up shops. These businesses will bring both local retail and jobs to East New York. I look forward to continuing to work with the Christian Cultural Center on this project and furthering the needs and aspirations of East New York residents, and I urge the City Council to vote to approve this project. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much Rick. The next panel we're going to call up is Cynthia McKnight, Janice Smith, Randy Whitaker, and Kate Cunningham. Cynthia McKnight, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Good afternoon everyone, my name is Cynthia McKnight, President of Community Education Council Thirteen and Union Leader of AFGE Local Nine-One-Three of United States Department of Housing and Urban Development HUD. I'm here to express my support for the Christian Cultural Center's Innovative Urban Village Project in the East New York neighborhood of Brooklyn, New York. Um, based on working on this project, I believe its development is beneficial to East New York and its residents. Um, as was shared, uh, the project would give a lot of needed, um, apartments and housing to the East New York neighborhood. As a person who grew up and rented houses of East, in East New York, I know the importance of safe and affordable housing. The Innovative Urban Village Project will create a total of two thousand and fifty units of housing, as was discussed earlier. And we, I just wanted to stress that we are in a housing crisis and many black and brown families cannot afford to remain in the city. A large portion of these units in this project will be reserved for households with lower incomes, ensuring that East New York community members can afford to move in. And as also that was, was shared, I wanted to just reiterate, is that two hundred of these affordable housing units will be reserved for seniors. This will positively change the trajectory of many of the most vulnerable populations. And what is really dear to me is the homeownership, um, component of this project. As we all know, with systemic racism that was caused by agencies that I work for, as HUD, with redlining, that a lot of black and brown people, um, is one of the reasons for the low homeownership rate. So having these hundred units of affordable homeownership, um, is really, really important for our community. In closing, I urge the Subcommittee on Zoning and Franchises to vote to approve this project. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next person to speak will be Janice Smith. Janice, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity to just make my brief comment, uh, on the IUV project, which I call it, IUV for short. This project to me is just, it, it, the word for it for me is hope. As a homeowner right on Louisiana, um, with my husband over the past, um, twenty-odd years, uh, um, I cannot say much, but what I need to, what I will say is Pastor Bernard and the team has addressed the social, emotional, physical, spiritual, financial, educational, health, and more well-being of the community and the surrounding community. That's why for me, the name I give this project is Hope. I support it fully. Thank you.
Thank you so much Ms. Smith. The next person to speak, Randy Whitaker.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, uh, my name is Randy Whitaker and I am a resident of East New York. I'm here to lend my support of the Innovative Urban Village Project. Uh, we are all aware that our community suffers from high unemployment and lack of opportunity. It takes real local leadership to guide us to prosperity. The Christian Cultural Center plans to incorporate several services that will benefit the residents of East New York and beyond. These include GED programs, childcare program, career counseling, and vocational training. In order for our kids, grandkids, nephews, and nieces to succeed, they need tools to achieve success. It is critical that our community receives the Plan Twenty-four Seven Daycare and Workforce Training Center that the project will bring. It, it takes a village to raise our children and the resources that the Innovative Urban Village proposes will help our children to learn, earn, pay it forward to future generations in East New York. I welcome the Innovative Urban Village and I hope your committee finds favor upon the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. The last person on this panel to speak is Kate Cunningham. Kate, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Starting time.
Good afternoon Chair Riley and committee members, my name is Kate Cunningham. I'm the Director of Government Relations at the New York Building Congress and I'll be testifying on behalf of our President and CEO, Carlo A. Sashara. On behalf of more than five hundred and fifty constituent organizations and two hundred and fifty thousand skilled tradespeople and professionals, we testify today in support of the Innovative Urban Village Project as we firmly believe the plan will be truly beneficial for East New York and its residents. As we all know, New York City is currently facing the dire realities of a housing crisis. More housing development is needed now more than ever and the Christian Cultural Center is a perfect candidate to lead the charge. The Center, under the dedicated and magnificent leadership of Reverend Bernard, with whom Carlo has had the pleasure of working closely with in the past, is a reputable, longstanding community member that has the best interest of the community at heart. Throughout their partnership with Gotham Organization and Menonoc Development, and over the course of their engagement with the community over the last six years, the Center has incorporated community feedback, including reducing the heights of some buildings and eliminating higher income tiers above eighty percent of AMI, which they just explained at length. The Innovative Urban Villages Plan will quintuple the number of homes on the block, building a transformative new micro-neighborhood on which, on what is currently ten acres of surface parking. The project will create housing opportunities for families of various sizes and incomes, with seventy-five percent of all rental units being between thirty percent to eighty percent of AMI, making it one of the most affordable projects of this scale in all of New York City. The development also includes a hundred affordable homeownership units, which will allow residents to gain financial security and build equity for generations to come. The development would provide residents with an abundance of transportation methods, including nearly nine hundred parking spaces, shuttle service to the nearby L and three trains, and bus rabbit transit on the Southern Brooklyn B-eight-two SBS. The integration of affordable rental housing, homeownership, community facility services, and retail in this successful neighborhood is a win for the direct community and New York as a whole. The New York Building Congress is proud to support the Innovative Urban Village Project.
Thank you Kate. Uh, this panel is now excused. The last panel we'll call up is Linda Hyris and Lori Midgate.
Starting time.
Linda, if you can hear me, please unmute and you may begin.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, good morning to everyone attending this hearing today. My name is Linda Hyers. I am a retiree who lives in East New York, and I also am a member of CCC for many years. I absolutely support the creation of Christian Cultural Center's Innovative Urban Village. I believe this project, under the leadership of Pastor A.R. Bernard, will benefit my generation and future generations to come by providing not only affordable housing, but in addition, the following: senior housing, affordable homeownership, a community playground, a new performing arts center, childcare facility, vocational training, and a shuttle service, and much, much more. This project gives me hope for a brighter future in my community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Linda. The last person to testify will be Lori Midget. Uh, Lori, if you can hear me, please unmute. Sorry if I mispronounced your last name, and you may begin.
Starting time.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Lori Majette. I've been a member of the East New York community since nineteen eighty-eight, when I became a teacher, assistant principal, and now principal for the last thirty-five years. I have helped raise a whole lot of children in East New York, and many of my students have come of age and are now in their thirties and forties. They're raising families, and they're ready to be homeowners, business owners, and entrepreneurs in the community where they grew up. They are the parents of my grad students. East New York is their home, and it's my home too. I clearly remember this community the way it was in the eighties and nineties and all that was happening in the streets with our families and to our children. The one constant that enabled us to change this community around was the support of the religious leaders and clergy that walked the streets with us, providing resources that can help save our community. And one of those churches is CCC, which has been my church for thirty years. I can testify that Dr. Bernard, his wife, and the congregation of CCC are personally invested in the East New York community, especially the children and youth. Investment means one thing on Wall Street, but it means something totally different in the hood, in our community, among neighbors and friends. Investing in our community means you have to put some time, care, and attention into something that we can see with our eyes, touch with our hands, and feel in our hearts, something that has made a difference in people's lives. And Pastor Bernard and CCC understand the assignment and continue to give a hundred and ten percent. For decades, they've gone above and beyond to do a good job lifting the spirit of this community and insisting that elected officials and government agencies and federal programs make us a priority. For all those things that will be borne from this project, the affordable housing, daycare, senior services, small business opportunities, positive quality of life, to name a few, I strongly support the Innovative Urban Village Project. It will not only dismantle generational disparities and systemic inequity that has plagued East New York, this project is a viable pathway to accelerate revitalization among an essential demographic. This gift must be delivered to my deserved community with all due speed. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you so much. Uh, we'll do a last call. If there's any members of the public who wish to testify remotely on the Innovative Urban Village Proposal, please raise your hand now. If you're in the room, please see the sergeant-at-arms, uh, to let them know that you wanna speak. We'll stand at ease for thirty seconds. There being no other members of the public who wish to testify on the pre-considered LUs relating to ULP numbers, C, two-two-zero-three-one-two, ZMK, and N, two-two-zero-three-one-three, ZRK, relating to the Innovative Urban Village rezoning proposal, the public hearing is now closed, and the items are laid over.
And Chair, before we adjourn, I will just close the vote for land use items one-ten, one-eleven, and one-twelve. The final vote is seven in the affirmative, no negatives, no abstentions.
Thank you, counsel.
I would just say the items are approved and will be referred to the full land use committee for a vote.
Thank you, counsel. That concludes today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Counsel, land use, and other council staff at the, and the sergeant-at-arms for participating in today's hearing. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you.